Good evening. My name is J.P. Boucher. I will be your acting chair this evening as our full-time chairman, Mr. Ralph Sharpe, unable to attend, and our vice chair, Mrs. Steve Lionel, is also unable to attend. This is the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. This is the June 11th zoning board meeting. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as the audio/video recordings, will be available later at NashuaNewHampshire.gov/GenusCenter, Select Zoning Board of Adjustment. The chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The board follows the meeting protocols procedures identifying its bylaws. The applicant will have -- will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the board. Next person wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are any questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present their response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the board deliberates in the terms and outcome. A timer is used to manage speaking time. Mr. Fark of the Planning Department will notify us when one minute is remaining. And again, the speaker's time remaining and to tell them when the speaker's time has expired. Note that all votes are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we'll be hearing only requests for variances, so I'll just go over that real quickly. A variance is a request that seeks permission for something -- to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those of special exceptions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws, the state of New Hampshire provides statute, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of the decision. Should this board not grant any rehearing requests, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Fark and the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full-time members in attendance: myself, J.P. Boucher, Mr. Jay McCarran, Mr. Josh Neely. We also have two alternate members in attendance, Mrs. Stavier Boris and Mr. Andrew Sylvia. In addition, we have board members. We also have with us Mr. Carter Fark, who's the deputy planning manager, and Mrs. Karina Ochoa, who's the zoning coordinator. We're going to start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. Ms. Boris?
Present.
Mrs. Sylvia?
Present.
Mr. McCarran?
Present.
Mr. Neely?
Present.
And Mr. Boucher is present. Tonight, we only have five members total here, so the alternates will participate in all the discussions and meetings and voting. And with that, we will start tonight's first case. Mr. Fark, is there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
All right, thank you. I'll read the first case into the record. It's for Heather Walsh and Derek Mason, 19 Eastbrook Road. Heather Walsh and Derek Mason, owners, 19 Eastbrook Drive, Sheet A, Lot 665, requesting a variance for land use code Section 190-32, Section B, Subsection 1, to exceed the maximum size of a recently approved, on February 13th of 2024, accessory in-law dwelling unit, 750 square feet permitted, 993 square feet proposed, City of New York, Zone Ward 7. Is the applicant here? Please come on up. Just state your name and address for the record, and then tell us what's going on.
Derek Mason, 19 Eastbrook Drive. We're just adding a kitchen to an existing area. I understand that it's larger than a usual ADU. A little mismeasurement on my part. Yeah, we're just adding it for my mother to live with us.
Okay. So, as I recall, and I was here when I was one of the members that voted in favor. So, as I recall, your home is a split-level home, and this is an already-existing space in the lower level?
Yes.
And again, there's no expansion to the house. It's just that existing space, and what you're telling us is that we're just a mismeasurement on the space, and you're looking to get the approval for using the space that's currently there?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to?
No, that's it at this time.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Mr. McCarran?
So, just to confirm, there is no change in what you had proposed that was approved previously by the board?
No.
It's just a measuring error?
It's just -- yes.
Out of curiosity, how did that come to light?
When the -- when our contractor went to pull the permit, I believe he found that it was larger than what we had anticipated, or what we initially thought it was.
Give me a second, Mr. McCarran.
And if I may, unless somebody else has a question, if you weren't granted the variance, what would be the impact to your ability to create this ADU? In other words, if you had to meet the 750-square-foot requirement?
Since it has a bedroom and a bathroom already, I guess we would just keep it the way it is, and we would just kind of work around it. The plan was, you know, for my mother to have her own space, and she -- I guess it wouldn't be her own. We would share.
So, in other words, if I don't want to put words in your mouth, if you were not granted the variance, you would not be able to create the ADU?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? You can take a seat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Is anybody else in the audience with -- like to speak in support of this application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public hearing. I'd like to start. So, again, I think there's an existing space. I, you know, I remember the layout from last time. I think at this point, I remember, and was, you know, I was reminded that the, I believe the contractor was here last time presenting. So, again, I think this is just an honest mistake. I don't think there's any value in denying the application based on having to wall off part of that large living area that's existing. I don't see any really value in that. Again, from outwardly looking at the home, what you would know whether it's 700 square feet or 993 square feet, and I don't think that the request is -- goes out of bounds, so to say. So, I'm going to support the application. It is because, again, it's not creating a new space. It's a space that already exists with the bedroom and the bathroom, so we just want to add a kitchen to that living, that living area. So, I'm going to support the application. Mr. Neely?
I'm also going to support the application. Yeah, that was a good point. There's no value to trying to put up that wall down there. I remember doing the drive-by on the house as well. It's not like there's any type of outward protrusion that's going to happen. And honestly, what he's trying to do is, you know, let somebody kind of age and place down there. It's, you know, what we've been pushing in the City of Nashua to increase housing stock. And, you know, as we had talked about the first time, he signed -- he signed everything properly for affidavits. I also honestly believe this is an honest mistake, so I'm in favor of this application.
I'm also in favor of the application. I think with the way the house is laid out and that space is, this is really the natural way to create the ADU, and as the applicant confirmed, if the variance weren't granted, he would be unable to create an ADU, and I do think it's a reasonably useful property, so I support it.
Mrs. Sylvia?
I also support the application. I have nothing else to add.
Ms. Boris?
I'm also in support of the application.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion? Mr. McCarran?
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Heather Walsh and Derek Mason, owners of 19 Estrobrook Drive, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-32, Sub B1, to exceed the maximum size of recently-approved accessory dwelling unit, 750 square feet permitted, where 993 square feet are proposed, be approved. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant could not be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We do find that, given the layout of the house, the way the split is, you know, exists, it would be impractical to create an ADU in any other way other than granting the variance. There'd be no impact to, you know, surrounding properties, and, but, you know, but for the granting of the variance, they could not pursue what is a reasonable permitted use in ADU. It is, we find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels. Again, we note there would be no, you know, exterior appearance of the ADU, and we have heard no testimony that would impact surrounding property in any way. It would not be contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice would be done.
Ms. Boris, seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, sir. Your application's been approved. Just be aware, again, there's a 30-day window of appeal, probably unlikely in this case, but just be aware, okay? Have a good evening. I'd like to open the public hearing for case number two, for David Hughes, owner of 58 Conant Road, Sheet C, Lot 226, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190 to 192, Section C, to exceed maximum driveway width, 20 feet existing, 24 foot, 24 feet permitted, requesting to pave an additional 20 feet, 20 feet foot driveway to connect to the existing driveway, resulting in a 40-foot total curb cut driveway width, City of New York, Zone Ward 9. Welcome, sir. Give me your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name's David Hughes at 58 Conant Road.
Just tell us what you want to do and why you want to do it.
Sure. So, a little background on why the driveway's wider. We had a house fire several years ago, and they had to put in a gravel driveway as part of the reconstruction process to put a mobile home in the backyard for us to live in. The reason why we like having that gravel turnaround is our present driveway sits directly across from the intersection of Sagamore Road. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Conant Road, but it's also a windy, hilly road, so we're between two hills. There's limited sight distance. So, our main concern is safety, pulling in and out of the driveway, not having to back out into that intersection.
Anything else?
I did discover there's already a curb cut there where we'd like to connect the pavement to, and added some pictures to that, of that.
Can we receive those pictures here?
Yeah, those pictures, it's hard to see because there's sand and gravel on top of it, but I shoveled out the corners of the existing curb cut.
Are there any questions? Mrs. Sylvia?
Did the owner of 60 Conant Road say anything about this? It looks like the existing area is already near his driveway, but I was wondering if he had any concerns about the changes.
No, it's right next to it. We're actually good friends, so he's got no concerns.
Any other questions? I think we'll set, sir.
All right, thank you.
Is anybody else in the audience like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public hearing. So, Conant Road's I'm familiar with because I used to live in that neighborhood. I don't, I haven't lived there in a while, but it really hasn't changed, and I know that Conant Road can be, could be fast. I know it's winding. I also recognize or saw that if you go up a little further up the street, there's a couple of, one more, I know one more I saw for sure, another driveway, similar situation. And, you know, as the applicant said, stated that just, you know, that area, and I think, again, because of speed, right? I think if the speed limits were strictly adhered to, I think somebody could back out of their driveway safely, but that's not really what happens, right? So, I think from a, from a point of safety, from, you know, exiting and entering that property, I don't really have an issue with it. I think the property, it's not like a tiny property. I think the property size is, can, can, again, I don't think it would look completely out of place to have that extra drive there. And again, especially because of the road conditions, the way the road is, and the speeds of the traffic, so, so those are my comments. Mr. Neely?
So, I do drive that road every day. Ironically, I think that's actually one of the safest sections of that road. That's kind of a flat straightaway. Honestly, I could go either way on this, and I'd like to hear what the rest of the board members have to say, but I'm undecided at the moment.
Mr. McCarran?
Sorry, I was also struggling with this one, but I think what turned my head is, you know, simply just thinking about having to back out into that intersection. You've got enough to, you know, to have to look each way on Conant Road, given the speeds that do happen there, but to have that additional intersection, you know, would certainly give me the willys, right? I could see the argument. So, again, a bit on the fence, but I'm leaning towards supporting it for that reason.
Mrs. Sylvia?
Okay. I'm in favor of the application, from what's been said so far in regard to the safety issues, particularly at the intersection, and also, I believe, paving would improve the property. And from what it sounds like, the butter that would be impacted the most seems to have no problem with it, and the butter's not here tonight, and we heard from the applicant that the butter doesn't have a problem with it, so I'm, I have no problem with it.
Ms. Boris?
I'm also in favor of the application for everything my colleague here stated.
Thank you. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Sylvia?
Okay. The matter of David Hughes, owner of 58 Conant Road, Sheet C, Lot 226, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-192C, to exceed maximum driveway width, 20 feet existing, 24 feet permitting, permitted, requesting to pave an additional 20-feet driveway to connect the, to the existing driveway, resulting in a 40-foot total curb cut driveway width, R9 Zone, Ward 9. One, variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property. Given the special circumstances of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. It's within the spirit and the intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, as we heard here today. The butter has no issue with it. It's not contrary to the public interest. Indeed, this would help, it sounds like this would help safety in the area, and this would have substantial justice, so I move in favor of this application.
Seconded by Mr. McCarran, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's five to nothing. Congratulations, your application's been approved. Again, like I spoke before, there's a 30-day window of appeal, so just be aware of that. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. With that, close the public hearing, case number two, and open the public hearing for case number three. Case number three is Family Realty Investments, 78 Amherst Street and 3-13 Putnam Street. Larry Kittle, owner, Family Realty Investments, LLC, applicant, 78 Amherst Street and 3-13 Putnam Street, Sheet 62 Lots 83 and 85, requesting a variance from land use code Section 190-16, Table 16, for a minimum land area after lot consolidation of lots 83 and 85, to allow a total of nine multifamily units on 29,036 square feet of land, where 56,005 square feet of land is required. Six units existing, City of New York, Zone Ward 2. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Morgan Hollis. I'm an attorney at Goddessman &amp; Hollis, 39 East Pearl Street in Nashua. I'm here representing two owners and one applicant. This application was a little hard to describe, so I'm going to spend a few minutes just introducing it, make sure you're all on the same page with me. There are currently two lots at the corner of Amherst Street and Putnam, and one of them is 78 Amherst Street, and that's Lot 85, and the other one is 3-13 Putnam Street, but it also has frontage on Amherst Street, and that is Lot 83. Lot 83 is the larger lot. Lot 85 is the small lot. Currently, if you've driven by the site, there are three duplexes that have just recently been constructed. They were allowed by variance from this board, and that's on Lot 83. That's about a 24,800-square-foot lot. Lot 85 is an existing single-family home, and it's quite old. I use the term obsolete only because it's the only single-family home in the entire area, and it's quite old, and it needs a lot of refurbishment. The owner of Lot 85 is Larry Kittle, and the owner of Lot 83 is Family Realty Investments, LLC. So, Family Realty bought the vacant lot, which is Lot 83, from Larry Kittle, and they built the three duplexes which were permitted. And those three duplexes are now constructed. They're actually sold. Five out of the six are sold, and a certificate of occupancy is issued, so if you've driven by, you've seen what they have done out there. Family Ventures approached Mr. Kittle about the corner house lot. The corner house, as I said, is a single family. It kind of sticks out, needs a lot of work. They took a look at it, and it didn't make sense to rework that single family, the amount of investment that would be required to be put in. And again, as I say, it's really the only single-family home. It's on the corner, bad access, bad visibility. And so, the proposal was that Family Ventures would buy this property from Mr. Kittle if they can obtain relief by consolidating this lot with their existing lot. And what that amounts to is you have one larger lot, and increases in size by about 2,000, about 2,500 square feet. The existing small lot is about 2,600 square feet. So, they would tear down the existing single-family home, and they would put up a triplex, but it would not be put on the Lot 85, it would be put on the 83. Once they're consolidated, it's all going to be Lot 83. So, the first step is, would that use be allowed if, or a consolidated lot? And it would be because it has a variance for multifamily, so multifamily use is allowed. What's not allowed is the density. You have to have a certain number of square feet per unit. When you take a close look at the neighborhood, really, nobody complies with that square-footage requirement, but we're coming forward with a variance application which would essentially consolidate the two lots, and it would increase the units from one unit on the corner to three units, which would move up Amherst Street adjacent to that large multifamily house. And I think in your application, you have a series of plans that I submitted. One plan shows the original subdivision and lot consolidation. Another one shows the site plan with the proposed units. And then you have a sketch zoning plan, which is not a site plan, showing where the units would be. Essentially, you tear down the single family, make that an extension of the existing parking lot, and then you would put a three-unit building identical to the two-unit buildings that are already out there. So, it'll all be one continuous development. The, so that's sort of the background of the property, as I said. The proposal is to build three duplexes. They would be two-bedroom, two-bath, just as the ones there. The floor plan is identical, and I attached the floor plan with the application. You have an aerial view, so you can see it from above what's surrounding the area, and as I talk about it, you'd be able to orient yourself to it. The existing lot is 2,651 square feet. It's an undersized lot to begin with, doesn't meet, doesn't comply with the zoning ordinance, but it's pre-existing, lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming. The entrance to this property is on Amherst Street. It's going to slide around to the side to be on Putnam, so there won't be any cars backing out of Amherst Street, and the parking itself will be accessed from the same parking driveway for the existing new units. So, there won't be multiple driveways here, just the one driveway will be shared. All these units will have a shared driveway and a shared parking with those that are already in existence. The resulting density will be 3,226 square feet currently on this lot. On Lot 83, the density is 4,132 square feet, and on the single family, of course, it's 2,651 square feet per unit. So, this is going to put them together, add two units to the housing stock, and the density doesn't change materially, but the safety is improved, the parking is, additional parking spaces are added, and it's a better lot configuration for all. The five criteria, number one, will not be contrary to the public interest. As I said, the property is surrounded by multifamily housing with a significant density. That is, the number of lot units per square foot is very similar or worse than what's being proposed. It's a, it's an area of well-kept and well-maintained multifamily homes, many of which were converted from larger, single or duplex homes. This is in keeping with that neighborhood, well-kept, well-organized homes. There is going to be adequate parking, so while we're adding two additional units to that block, we are adding substantially more than a single parking space for each unit. So, it's going to comply. This, of course, if you grant the variance, has to go to the planning board for its approval as well. We're utilizing the area closest to the very largest multifamily on Amherst Street. That's that 22-unit that you see going along Amherst Street. So, there are 22 units there. The density on that is substantial. Just want to be accurate in my quote. That has 22 units on 48,787 square feet, so those units are 2,218 per square, square feet per unit. And the four-unit apartment building located, what I would call, easterly of our building along Amherst Street, is four units on 7,797 square feet, so that's about 2,000 square feet per unit. So, we're right in, we're actually better from a density perspective than the existing neighboring units. What we're proposing is a allowed use by the variance previously granted for Lot 83, and that is multifamily. It's not going to alter the character of the neighborhood. We're not building a large building, we're building three units, and the density is similar to what's in the existing neighborhood. So, if you grant the variance, the character will not be altered. There's no threat to public health, safety, or welfare, and that there is adequate parking. Planning board's obviously going to see to that. There's sewer and water, new construction, and adding two units is all in the benefit of the public interest. Moving the driveway to Putnam, having no entrance off of Amherst, or not having two entrances off Putnam, is a plus to the neighborhood as well. Number two, observe the spirit of the ordinance. The spirit of every zoning ordinance is to protect property values and cluster similar uses. Our use is similar to what's there. We're not going to alter the character of the neighborhood, and we are not making it too dense, considering the density that exists out there, and that's been approved already. Square foot per unit will be about the same as others, and as I said already, no threat to health, safety, or welfare, as additional parking, entrance to the parking is away from the corner, not backing into Amherst Street. Number three, substantial justice will be granted. There's a benefit, the benefit to the owner must not outweigh the harm to the public. So, we first have to try to identify the harm to the public and determine what that is, and then if it is outweighed, if it is outweighed by the benefit to the applicant, then...
Do you want me to take a break? Will they? Do we, do we need to stop from that?
No, we're having an issue with the Zoom. Someone can't get access to it, so we're just asking some questions. Sorry for the...
Oh, no.
You guys can keep...
Okay. So, substantial justice... So, substantial justice, as I said, you do the weighing of the harm to the public versus the benefit to the private property owner. And in this case, there really is no harm to the public. In fact, there's a benefit to the public if you grant the variance. You're adding two brand-new units to the housing stock. You're converting one existing single-family to a three-family. Again, new housing. It's going to be the same as what exists in the area, and you're improving the safety. And you're also improving the aesthetics, frankly, of that area. Number four, will not diminish values of the neighboring property. The neighborhood has similar density. This is internal lot development, not on-the-street development, per se. It's adding off-street parking and two new units. It's actually adding value to anybody who would be next door. And I did request and just obtained a letter from an independent appraiser. He had gone out and viewed, and I apologize, I didn't get it to you before, but I'll hand it out with the chair's permission, but I'll just read it into the record. "In response to your recent request, I'm pleased to submit my analysis with regard to the above-captioned property of a variance to allow nine multifamily units," there are six out there now, "on 29,036 square feet, where 56,000 is required, following lot consolidation. The site and abutting sites were inspected and photographed. I've reviewed and analyzed the variance application, the zoning ordinance, density requirements, and proposed plans. Surrounding properties consist of a 22-unit complex to the west, four-unit multifamily to the east, duplexes, and a few single-family residences to the east and south, school and stadium across Amherst Street." It goes on to describe the property and how it received a variance in April of 2020 to allow six units, and the site plan approval in June. Construction of these buildings is complete. Plans call for consolidation, and he does the math that I've already read to you about consolidation and per-square footage. "The proposed development meets all but one minimum lot requirement, where density dictates additional lot size would be required. I opine that allowing nine multifamily units following lot consolidation, where water and sewer are available, and where parcel zoning is not only residential in nature, but also allows for density, does not alter the character of the neighborhood, will not detract from the aesthetics of the area. The adjacent lots are multifamily properties, and the recently constructed buildings complement the area. Noah Butters will notice any difference, as this is in keeping with a residential neighborhood, and satisfies the need for housing. In my opinion, granting the variance requested to allow nine multifamily units following lot consolidation in this location will not adversely affect the real estate values of the Butters or the neighborhood in general." That's Jay Chat Rogers, a commercial appraiser from Hollis, New Hampshire. So, finally, the final requirement is that, the hardship requirement. And we have to first establish that the property itself is unique, and I think what is the most unique about it, you can see by the aerial, if you look at it, you see all the property surrounding it, and there's the one house that backs up to where the construction zone is, now completed. But it's the single house. Also unique about this property is Lot 83, which is the larger piece. You can see has a vacant lot on Amherst Street. You don't really want to have any access off of Amherst Street. You don't really want to leave a single-family home, so you end up with a kind of two unique parcels of land from the perspective of what else is going on in the neighborhood. It is also next to and adjacent to multifamilies, so putting a duplex on a single lot in that area just doesn't financially justify tearing down the existing single-family home. You would end up with zero space, you'd end up with poor access. It just doesn't work. The best resolution in this entire area, and the most reasonable resolution, is to consolidate the two lots. Enforcing the density requirements on either of these properties is, has no fair and substantial relationship to the purpose of ensuring adequate spacing, fire and safety, and proper driveway access. That is, the zoning ordinance itself, when you talk about density, you want to make sure you don't have too many units on too little land. But in this particular area, because of the design of the units and the layout of the units, you actually end up with parking, which is one of the requirements everybody concerned about in a dense area, and you end up with some open space. So, we think that enforcing it and requiring additional square footage for either of these two properties doesn't make sense. And finally, is the proposed answer, that is lot consolidation and reduced density, a reasonable and appropriate use of the property? It is, it's a multifamily, that's what's in the area, it's new construction, and it doesn't have access on Amherst Street. And with that, I think we've covered all the criteria.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Sylvia?
Yeah, the new joined lot, would the address of that be Amherst Street or Putnam Street?
I believe it'll be Putnam Street, because that'll be the driveway. And of course, the fire department sets it, but that would be our choice, because nobody would find it otherwise.
Any other questions, Mr. Neely?
The new units that are currently there, very beautiful construction, by the way, because of the topography, they all have decks that are hanging out and over. Looks to me on the drawing you just handed out, there'll be no decks on the back, or there will be decks?
There'll be some decks. I guess there's room for the decks.
Okay. You know, originally, I had a question about the obsolescence, but once again, this new document, is this true, the house is from about 1900?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions by the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Neely?
So, I am in favor of this application. I did have some questions coming in about that single-family house. Those questions were answered about the obsolescence. They've done a great job in that current lot with what they had to work with. This will certainly be within character. I had no idea, there was no other single-family houses in the close proximity, so this definitely will fit into the character there. Also, the safety of taking that driveway off of Amherst Street, I think that's a great thing to do. So, for those reasons, I'm certainly in favor of this application.
Thank you, Mr. McCarron.
I'm also in favor of the application. I think that, you know, certainly, it is somewhat of an odd parcel. You are going by it, the development seems unfinished. I mean, in some ways, it's still in construction, but it's just kind of odd to have what appears to be a vacant lot there on Amherst Street. I think this will make it a much more complete-looking development. The existing single-family home is on an extremely small lot, and clearly, it would be challenging to bring it up to current standard, and the density is consistent with the surrounding area.
Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
I'm also in favor of this application. If you just looked at the title of the motion here, you would think, wow, it needs twice as much square footage as what they're asking, but like has been said before, it fits in the neighborhood, and it's an odd parcel, so I think this is a reasonable request, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you. Ms. Boris?
I'm also in support of the application.
Thank you. Also, I'm supportive of the application. Anybody who'd like to make a motion? Mr. McCarron?
I'd like to make a motion that the application of Larry Kittle and Family Realty Investments, LLC, of 78 Amherst Street and 3-13 Putnam Street, requesting a variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3 for minimum land area, after lot consolidation of Lots 83 and 85, to allow a total of nine multifamily units on a 29,036 square feet of land, where 56,005 square feet of land is required. Note that six units of these are existing. We find that a variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. Among the special conditions that we found were the unusual shape of the larger parcel, and the very, very small size of the existing family home parcel, and the way the grade interacts with Amherst Street, and the fact that it does appear as though you have a vacant lot there in a corner of that property that's really very difficult to use in any practical sense. And then, given the density of the surrounding area, applying strictly the current density requirement would not be reasonable on this particular property. We find that it is within the in spirit and the intent of the ordinance, and again, it's consistent with the character of the surrounding area, that it will not adversely affect property values of surrounding parcels, and we do have testimony from an appraiser to that effect, that it is not contrary to the public interest, and substantial justice will be done.
Anybody who'd second the motion? Ms. Boris, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Five to nothing. Congratulations. As you know, there is that third-day window appeal. Thank you for coming. So, with that, I'll close the public meeting for case number three. At this point, I'm going to recuse myself, and Mr. McCarron will take over his chair for the rehearing.
I guess just for decorum, I'll come sit near the seat. And so, the next item on our agenda is a rehearing request, so I'm going to read this into the record. A rehearing request from appeal of administrative decision that was upheld at the 5/14, or I'll say, the May 14, 2024 ZBA public hearing. Timothy Bosch, appellant, 37 Arrow Lane, Sheet B, Lot 549, requesting appeal of the administrative decision pursuant to Land Use Code Section 190-136 relative to an intended use of the property for a boarding house, or boarding house slash rooming renting is not permissible under Land Use Code at our 16 Archery Lane. Again, as the board may recall, and hopefully you've had a chance to look through your materials, the board did uphold, or grant the appeal from the administrative decision, and a rehearing has been requested. So, we have four points that we need to go through to find whether or not the board will grant a rehearing. So, what I'd like to do, unless we want to have a general conversation before that, I would go through each of the points and then ask each of us to articulate whether or not we feel it has met that criteria, if that's okay with everyone.
Sure.
So, shall I just proceed with the points?
Yes.
So, first point, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice, or denying somebody the right to be heard, or a similar procedural error. Mr. Neely?
There was no procedural error. Every, proper notice was certainly given of the upcoming hearing, and every person was given the right to be heard, as well as all of the electronic communication that we received.
Mr. Sylvia?
I do not believe there is a procedural error. From what I could ascertain, everyone that wanted to speak at the meeting was allowed to, and to my understanding, proper notice was given to everyone in the...
Ms. Boris?
I believe there was no procedural error. Everybody was given notice, and nobody was denied the right to be heard.
I also agree that there was no procedural error. Second point, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception, or in this case, or variance, in this case, administrative appeal? So, the points specifically don't matter, but nevertheless, we'll ask the question, was it an illegal decision?
This was not an illegal decision. The board did address all points of law required by special exception and/or variance as presented in the discussions that we had. We tried to keep it on point, and we do believe that the items of law that we discussed relative to the city ordinance is what we addressed completely.
Mr. Sylvia?
I agree with Mr. Neely. I believe there was no legal decision made. There was discussion about the Fair Housing Act, and we did not believe that, there was no intent of discrimination at this decision, so I believe that the proper decision was made.
Ms. Boris?
There was not an illegal decision made, and I agree with my colleagues.
And I also agree that the decision was not illegal. Point three, does the request for a rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Mr. Neely?
No.
Mr. Sylvia?
No, I'd not received any additional information. That would change my opinion.
Ms. Boris?
No additional information.
And I agree, no additional information was provided that was not either presented or available at the time of hearing. Four, is there anything which would cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Neely?
No.
Mr. Sylvia?
I just wanted to clarify my statement from the first hearing, I guess, in this point. In the packet in the original thing, there was a discussion about how the applicant did not reach out to neighbors in a similar application in Worcester. I believe if they, if the applicant did reach out to neighbors to have a reasonable accommodation, that could have changed what happened here, but at this point, I don't know if that would be possible, given the tenor of the applicant and the neighbors now. So, I don't think anything could change things as it is now. If we go back in time, maybe we could change it, but right now, I don't think anything could change it.
Ms. Boris?
No.
And I would agree, there's nothing that, from my perspective, would cause me to make a different decision. The decision, from my perspective, and I think certainly from the majority of the board members voting, if not all, was that this turned on the definition of halfway house in the zoning ordinance, and that was really the sole, if not, or primary, if not, sole factor. And I would note that this board in the past has seen multiple cases of halfway houses, sober homes, you know, whatever terminology you want to use, that have come before this board, and this board has granted relief under the zoning ordinance, most recently for one on Kinsley Street. So, I think the history of this board's action shows that there is no prejudice against sober homes, halfway homes, group homes in general, again, whatever terminology we want to use. This was strictly about the definition of halfway house in the ordinance and its application to what was proposed, given the facts of this case.
And just to build on that, I believe even in this property, a halfway house or a congregate living situation could be appropriate under certain circumstances, but the circumstances that were given at the last hearing did not seem appropriate to me, so I just wanted to clarify that.
I would agree, and under our ordinance, that's a decision for the planning board to make.
Correct. Yeah, I think a special, conditional permit.
So, given the fact that the individuals requesting the rehearing have not shown that any of the four points have been met, the request for rehearing is denied.
Mr. Chair? I think the board should have one overall...
Oh, sorry, you're right. Let's take one overall vote on the rehearing request. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion. In regard to the rehearing request for 16 Archery Lane, Nashua, New Hampshire, from appeal of administrative decision that was upheld at the May 14, 2024 ZBA public hearing, Timothy Bosch, applicant, 37 Arrow Lane, Sheet B, Lot 549, requesting appeal of administrative decision pursuant to Land Use Code Section 190-136 relative to an intended use of property for boarding house room renting is not permissible under the Land Use Code at 16 Archery Lane, R9, Zone 6. I move in opposition to this request. There was no procedural error, including improper notice, denying someone the right to be heard, et cetera. We do not believe this was an illegal decision. The board completely addressed each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance. In this case, it was just an appeal, not either of those things. The request does not contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing, from what we can ascertain, and there is nothing that could cause the board to make a different decision. could cause the board to make a different decision.
I do just want to note that I did fail when I was reading the case to note that the rehearing was requested by attorney Andrew Tyne, you know, Andrew Tyne, attorney of law, for the property. If you have the record reflect that. All in favor? If you can say that the request for the hearing is denied.
Now we have the agenda for the next meeting on June 21st. I have looked over the agenda. I don't see any regional impact. Does anybody see anything?
No regional impact.
Okay, so there's no impact. Then we have some meeting minutes. I believe, what was the, just one set, right?
Yeah, so there's one set. So the notes here note it should have been May 28th. I have the May 14th, I believe, which I believe you've already voted on.
That's right. Yeah, I was wondering about that also.
So twenty minutes, are we? We have --
We gave you the May 14th.
We got the May 14th meeting minutes here in front of us.
I didn't think the May, actually, the May 28th minutes weren't ready when we put this out. I think I just put in these by mistake, so I think these were already supported. So I think we'll put the May 28th ones at the next meeting. Sorry about that.
So there's no meeting minutes still?
No. No minutes.
Okay. With that, is there anything else that the board would like to discuss? Okay. We are adjourned at 7:22.
Who were the minutes from May 14? It was already done.
It was already done. So we're adjourned at 7:22.
Thank you.
Thank you.